Good evening. I am Joseph Pereira, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It is 6:00 PM on Thursday, October 19th, 2023. We are meeting at one government center in the first-floor hearing room pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, Subsection F. I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Fall River Government TV, Mr. Alex Mello, recording both video and audio versions. If anyone desires to make an audio/video or combination recording thereof, please notify me and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. There hearing none. Our recording secretary this evening is Nina Kruger, sitting to my immediate right. Present this evening are permanent members James Colkins, Dan DePere, Ricky Sahadi, and alternate member Eric Kelly. Also with us this evening is Director of Engineering and Planning, Mr. Dan Aguirre, sitting to my far left, and our Assistant Planner, Chris Pereno, sitting to my far right. Nina, have all petitions to be considered here been properly advertised and all parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the ZBA and Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, as amended?
Yes.
I declare the October 2023 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River open for such business as shall come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the board, including the petitioners, abutters, anyone in support, or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentations should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the chair. The board's rules and regulations direct the board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for this for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this is the Zoning Board of Appeals. The board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use which is the subject of the petition before the board this evening. Clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duty as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petition and after a decision of the board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance 25-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the city clerk's office or from the planning department. I remind everyone that the building inspector is the code enforcement authority, and you are here this evening because the building inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter - section 9-18 requires that all multiple-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizens' input on zoning board's specific matters at the end of the meeting. I'll note that who anyone who wishes to speak during that time, there is a sign-up sheet on the table outside the door to the room. I declare that an official copy of the City of Fall River zoning ordinance is available at the city clerk's office and that one cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. Is this thing giving a great deal of feedback? Alex, can you adjust that? Thank you. I have a hard enough time hearing myself once.
It could be construed as art.
Could they? By the way, those chords must have had something to do with a piece of art. They are not a piece of art. We'll try this again. Let us begin with old business. Item number 01, Jeffrey Diogo, care of Attorney Peter Sullino, 10 Third Street, MAP N-06, Lot 34. The applicant seeks a variance to construct a mixed-use building on the property located property location containing an art studio on the first floor and an apartment on the second floor. Abandoning onsite parking requirements mandated by the previous decision of the ZBA. The applicant seeks an additional special permit under Section 86-445 to reduce the number of on-street parking space off-street parking spaces required. This property is located in EBL Local Business Zoning District and in AOD Arts Overlay District and an HD1 Housing Development Overlay District. This petition was previously tabled on September 21st, 2023, Zoning Board of Appeals meeting by at the request of the applicant. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. For the record, my name is Peter Sullino. I'm a lawyer here in Fall River. My office is at 550 Locust Street. As the board remembers, this petition relating to 10 Third Street was here in September. I did move to table it and the board graciously granted that request. The purpose of the request to table was to address some of the concerns that were raised by the board during the September meeting. So just a brief recap here. Mr. Diago has granted a variance. He went through site plan review. He received a building permit. He built the building. The building currently is in disrepair and right across the street from this building. His brother passed away in June, and ultimately he'd like to see the project through. They were co-owners of the building, so that was the reason for the filing. The main objections or opposition, as I perceived it from the board, were the lack of parking as it was shown on the original variance, as well as the size of the building differing from what was originally presented at the ZBA meeting in 2017. So I can report to the board as follows in an effort to address those concerns. With respect to the parking, my client has reached an agreement with the City of Fall River through which he was able to lease two parking spaces in the city garage just to our south. I've submitted, and I believe it's in the board's packet, an invoice that indicates he has paid in full through the end of this year. He was advised by the parking clerk that he cannot pay for next year, meaning 2024, I guess for city or budgetary reasons. So if this were approved, my client would certainly stipulate to the fact that he would need to maintain his lease for the two parking spaces in the city garage. And I've also submitted to Nina an invoice for next year, which would be due in January, indicating that it's $1,080 for the year for the two parking spaces. Relative to the concerns surrounding the building, my client is pretty passionate about the fact that he did receive a building permit and the building is there and the foundation was inspected and all the various phases were inspected. But he also understands the realities of the situation that he's in, and he wants to be deferential to the board's authority. And as a result, we submitted a new plan to Nina indicating that he would be willing, if the board is inclined, to remove a portion of the building at the rear, which equates across two floors to approximately 375 square feet of building space. This removal, I think, serves to address the board's concern about the enlargement of the building and the differing size of the building as it was presented at the zoning board and the planning board and through the building permit. In terms of dollars and cents, it should be noted that by doing that, he would be losing, obviously, money as a result of having to take it down. And then he would also be losing bedrooms that were intended to be used for the residential use on the second floor. So it is possible. He would do it if he had to, and we've submitted this plan in an effort to be responsive to the board's concerns. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions from the board. My client can certainly answer questions, and then I look forward to Mr. Macy's presentation in opposition.
Okay, very good. So as we recall from last month, that area that's been hashed out, which is potentially to be taken down, or thank you for that offer, is pretty much where the parking spaces were going to be, and that was the section of the building that extended beyond that which had been originally permitted.
That is correct. And also, in an effort to answer or respond to that, I had Mr. Tolman do an overlay of the proposed building versus what was there, what was raised, and the building that was raised in 2009 did extend further back, and I'm happy to provide that if the board wants to see that as well.
I get it, but that's not what was permitted, so...
Understood. I was just giving a point of reference.
No, no, I appreciate that. And that was that extra space was probably given up for parking spaces at the time, so... Any questions from the board at this point? Comment from engineering?
The only thing concerning that offer is that we had also asked that on this new plan that they showed the footprint of the building that was permitted through the variance. So you'll see that on the plan as well. When you look at the setbacks, what's actually out there now is just marginally larger. Setback to the north reduced by a foot. Three feet was the setback at the time. The building actually came in at two, and the building with the southerly property line was 2.4, and it's actually 2.2. So we did add that to the plan and does not create much more of a nonconforming element to it.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board at this point? I would turn to general public. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone to speak in opposition to the petition?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Joseph Macy. I'm an attorney with an office at 209 Bedford Street in Fall River in association with Dr. Frank. Here tonight, representing Mr. Anthony Cudero, who I think the board is familiar with. He has substantial properties in the city and particularly substantial properties in this area. We very much oppose this new request, and I'll be as direct and succinct as I can. What this board is looking at is zoning jujitsu. And by that I mean turning things upside down and inside out. The petitioner came before this board some time ago, made a presentation, and got what he asked for. What he asked for was a building, which he got with the accoutrements, and he represented he would get parking. Based on that, the board granted his request. Then, and this is really the rub, then he lost his parking commitment. So he went ahead and built what he wanted to build in excess of what he had given permission to build and in violation of the parking requirement, which he just ignored and built the building right over. Now, he comes before the board and says, "Oh, I couldn't do what I originally was given permission to do, so I violated that permission. I went ahead and built something, I'll call it illegal, but certainly in violation of his permission, and now I want you to give me permission to build something else." It doesn't make sense. It's not legal. You can't create your own hardship, and I'll leave it to the board to decide credibility and policy and if this is really something the board wants to tolerate. But the fact is, he's not entitled to what he's asking for, and when he got what he asked for, he violated that permission. So that's the jujitsu, and I think you can't call somebody out on strikes in wrestling, but I ask you to deny this petition.
Funny, every month we seem to do jujitsu and kung fu fighting in this room, so no stranger to it.
Yes, if I may reply. So first of all, again, my client built what is out there with a building permit. So I would assert to you that it is not illegal that certain departments within the city permitted what he built. We're not here to ask to build something illegal. It's already there. We know, I guess if we want to use wrestling and physicality analogies, that we are not in a position to leverage. That's why I instructed my client to be deferential to the board and to consider an alternative plan and parking to address the concerns. Because in a wrestling match, when you're about to get pinned, you have to slide to your hip and get the leverage, and that's the only choice we have here. So there's no magic, there's no jujitsu, and notwithstanding the abutters' opposition, I think that we've done the best we could in the circumstance that we are in right
And there's only a limited number of options. One is to come up with a solution. It was built under a building permit, which means the building inspector had to be had to have been out there at least one time, and if the building inspector did not realize the thing was being built outside of the parameters of the permitted building, shame on the City of Fall River. So we either tear it down, build what was or come back and try to build what was originally permitted, leave it there and let the city tear it down, or come up to some type of solution. Anybody else to speak in opposition? Did I have to turn?
Could I just add one thing?
Sure. Please just identify yourself for the record.
Yes, Jeff Tolman from Northeast Engineering Consultants. The building, the full scope of the building that you see, they have a footprint, including the hashed out area, was shown on a site plan that went through site plan review with the City of Fall River, and that plan was subsequently used in the building permit application packet. So the building was not expanded after the building permit was issued. It was, the petitioner was upfront, and I think part of the confusion was the way the decision was written, and it mentions waiving all dimensional requirements. So I don't think the petitioner realized he was doing anything wrong at that point. He felt he had the ability to do it, submitted plans to show what he wanted to do, and got approval at the city level through site plan review and the building department.
Thank you for that input. Now, I'll also point out that a number of developers in the city, especially those who have been developing downtown, have come up with alternative parking besides their own property. It's been pretty common, and some extremely fine projects have gone forward having to do that. I would turn to the board at this point in time. Last chance for questions, if there are any. If there are not, I would accept a motion to either approve with conditions or deny.
Make a motion to accept as long as he maintains the parking lease.
And that would be with that extension area in the back left intact?
Yep.
No, you said with the area being removed.
As presented, yeah. As presented.
So you're talking...
Motion to accept as presented with the caveat of maintaining the parking.
Okay, but as presented was with the option of removing that back section of the building?
Well, it says on the plan to be removed.
Yeah.
So it is with the removal of the back section of the building as indicated in the hashed area on the plans?
Yep.
Okay. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
That was you, Dan?
That was me.
And so that's for the variance, and then we won't need the special permit anymore because the parking will be off-site, right?
Well, you have to have it. The special permit allows you to utilize other parking other than onsite parking, so you still have to act on the special permit for parking.
All right. No other comment? On the variance then, Eric Kelly?
Yes.
Jim Colkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
And Chairman Pereira, yes. Then there is the matter of the special permit regarding parking to be waived. If it, if we are to allow it, it should be waived by virtue of or maintaining the parking at an off-site location. Could get sticky down the line trying to prove that.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering how that gets monitored down the road and what happened if it was not...
The building department would have to monitor it if it became a problem.
And then what happens to the variance? It become void?
I mean, they're not going to tell people to leave, I wouldn't believe.
Yeah, that's what...
But it's just like every other scenario where an applicant provides X number of spaces here, X number of spaces on another lot. We often have applicants, different applicants, laying claim to the same spots in parking facilities, so at the time of relief, they're providing you with security of those two spaces along with the installation of the new space on the street as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is it within the purview of this board to require within this motion that receipts be submitted when the payment is made for 2024? That the receipt be submitted to this board, that in fact the payment was made for the two leased parking places?
I think if it's, oh, I think you're asking the chairman, so the chairman will speak in that.
Well, I think it is reasonable. I mean, just as, just as when we separate properties, we're supposed to make sure...
You can require that no occupancy permit be granted until the security of parking for 2024 has been submitted.
It not come to the board to be submitted with the, with the, at the time of an occupancy permit.
Right.
So it wouldn't come to us, it would go to the zoning enforcement authority.
So we can require that in the motion? Is that correct?
Yes, yeah. It's reasonable. What's our wishes, kids?
This is bifurcated. On parking, I guess one...
I know you love bifurcated.
No, I don't want to bifurcate anything. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant a special permit on the condition that receipts for the continued parking for the year 2014, I mean 24, be submitted prior to the issuances of occupancy permits.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Ricky Sahadi. Any discussion on the motion? Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Jim Colkins?
Yes.
Eric Kelly?
Yes.
Chairman Pereira, yes?
Thank you all.
Thank you. New business, item number one. HQV Homes LLC, care of Attorney Mark L. Levin, 92 Ballard Street, excuse me, MAP S13, Lot 22. The applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to Section 86-425 of the City of Fall River of a zoning ordinance to extend the non-conforming structure as well as a variance for the increase of lot coverage. The property is located in a G General Zoning District. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, again, Attorney Mark L. Levin, law office is at 138 Rock Street, Forbes, Massachusetts. The petitioner purchased the property and desires to add in addition to the rear of that property to the north of the property of where it exists, to add two bedrooms and a bathroom. The interior of the property is such that they're extremely small bedrooms and a half, basically a half bath in the units, and my client wants to put a full bath in and two bedrooms. It's not a use problem, but we, we lack area, and at the same time, my client will keep the same dimension to the east side, which is 2.4 feet from the boundary, so we can just extend the building straight out and just add onto the building. He meets the rear yard and the west yard sidelines, but he lacks the ability to place an addition anywhere else in, in order to give access. The landing on the rear of the property is so that it would meet the emergency code to have access from each unit to get outside because it's required by law, and right now it doesn't have that required access. But again, it's an older building and no one ever bothered updating it, so while they're spending money to update it, they just wanted to add this, basically it's 12 feet to the back of the property, the current house, it just doesn't, it lacks any other way you can put the bedrooms on the property in a full bath there. Unfortunately, that's the best he's got. So we need a special permit to allow the continue of the same nonconforming sideline on the east and to waive the area, the density requirements for the building to sit on the ground. Lot coverage.
Do we need a special permit if the, if the nonconformity already exists?
Well, because we're extending it. Because we're extending it by 12 feet. So yeah, that's the odd part about the whole thing. I was hoping it'd just be a special permit for all of it, but lot coverage is not one of the things you can get a special permit.
Could have been a special permit. I don't know what existing lot coverage is, but you're already in exceedance.
Yeah, but I read it. You read it? I read that twice, and I said, "Okay, I need a variance. I can't get away with a special permit for the lot coverage. I can get away with it for the side yard." I know it's odd, but it's, I read the language and I said, "I don't think I can do it, so I'm not going to ask you to give me a special permit for something that I'm not comfortable that I could get normally with lot coverage."
Looking at notes from planning department, you do indicate that it's current, no, it's required is 25%. We don't know what's there now. We're seeing existing is 51.7%.
Right, and the proposed coverage will up to 66.
How many units are in this building currently?
Three.
And would this be an additional unit?
Oh, no, no. It's just being added to the three units.
They're adding two bedrooms to each floor.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all they're doing. From what I'm told, they're extremely small and there really isn't an adequate bath at all, and that's so they're going to reconfigure the entire, each floor and add two bedrooms to it. And have a real bath.
No, no additional kitchens.
No additional kitchens.
Thank you. Okay. And the, the setback to the west remains the same?
Yes, that's within the required, and the rear yard still meets the requirement. It's just these two...
I mean, we've got existing nonconformity on two sides and, and on lot coverage at this point.
Right.
All right, questions from the board? Comments from engineering? Is there anybody here to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone to speak in opposition? Okay, I turn to the board again. Last chance for any questions, and if there are none questions or comments, I entertain a motion on this. This has been under redevelopment for quite some time, hasn't it?
I don't know. My client purchased it. I know he said there had been a fire with the prior owner, but again, I don't know the detail. My client took title in April.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the variance according to the specifications
I'll second.
Is that the end again?
Yes.
Thank you. It's the chair. I can tell.
I suppose we should augment that, provided that no additional units be created.
Well, right now, you're just doing the variance, which is the variance.
Oh, the variance is on my coverage.
So we have a motion and a second. A motion by Jim Colkins, variance, second by Dan DePere. Discussion, hearing none. On the motion, Eric Kelly?
Yes.
Jim Colkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Chairman Pereira, yes?
And Mr. Chairman, I, I guess this one is...
This is bifurcated, yep.
I find that the requested special permit is not substantially more detrimental to the area.
Have a motion on the floor that the special permit requested is not substantially more detrimental to the area. Do we have a second?
I second.
Second. On the motion, Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Jim Colkins?
Yes.
Eric Kelly?
Yes.
Chairman Pereira, yes?
And Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the special permit conditional on no additional divisions or units be created through the expansion.
Motion to grant with the condition that no additional dwelling units be created. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by... Second by Dan DePere. On the motion, Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Jim Calkins? Eric Kelly?
Yes.
Chairman Perera, yes?
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Good to see you.
Nice to see you guys. Yeah, I only had one tonight. I don't see you for Thanksgiving.
You as well. Item number two, Summit View LLC.
Mr. Chairman, attorney Kalaran asked, he's at a, at a hearing in Somerset.
Oh.
So if you want to put that one off until he gets in, we appreciate it.
No problem. Item number three, Beverly Pereira, not related. 350 Rochester Street, map R-04, lot 90. The applicant seeks a special permit to reduce the required setbacks between detached garage and an existing dwelling in a single-family zoning district. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Beverly Pereira of 350 Rochester Street, and this is my husband Keith. We presented last year at this time with Attorney Levin to give us what we needed for the addition of the garage. And somehow, the setback that we need the special permit for now was not taken into account. So we're requesting for the five feet instead of the six feet. And then we'll need an extension for the existing garage because we weren't able to start because we needed to go through this. We went through site plan review and it was only through the site plan review that they realized that it was actually five feet in the plans and not six, but the original plans had it. We didn't change anything from the original plans and you should have a copy of the original plans from last year when we did the variance. And that's how that was found. And we're also requesting, because if we had gone through an attorney expecting everything to be taken care of, and it wasn't, so we were asking for a waiver for the special permit because we thought everything would have been addressed last year.
The filing fee?
The filing fee.
We'll consider that. Okay, if this is a request, help me. If this is a request to change, to vary a dimension, why is it a variance?
This is an entirely new special permit.
No, I understand that.
Yep.
But why is it a special permit rather than a variance if there's a setback situation?
The garage, garages, the setback from a building to the garage is required to be six feet, but by special permit, all of those garage things can be waived by special permit.
I'll have to read that.
So the use of dealing with the garage addition itself, that was all granted fine. The dimension between the two structures was not provided. And then when we asked for that to be provided at site plan review, it was determined that it was only five feet and that was not discussed or granted at the time of the original review.
Okay.
Just cleaning up, dotting i's and crossing t's.
Yep. Okay, very good. We do have the two separate items, we'll handle these. Questions from the board, comments? Some of you will recall this one. You're taking the old, you're taking the current garage down, putting a new garage up. There was something else that was going on, but I guess that was the bulk of why you were here last time, was just on the garage issue?
Right, correct.
Okay. And that, and that dimension was just minced?
Extension be sufficient?
It has to be, you can't, we can't extend a variance for more than six minutes.
It's either two separate items, let's just deal with three. Item four is the extension.
Yeah. Okay, again, questions from the board? Anybody here to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody here to speak in opposition? They're hearing none, I'll consider a a motion from the board on the special permit allowing a setback of five feet between a separated garage and, and the dwelling.
Mr. Chairman, it seems to me that there was a reasonable misunderstanding here. And so I would make a motion that we approve the special permit.
Is, is this bifurcated?
Oh, is this bifurcated?
Let's cover it, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second.
So, well, we need the motion first. So I would make the motion that this is not, this request is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Dan DePere. On the motion, Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Eric Kelly?
Yes.
Chairman Perera, yes? And then the motion itself?
And the motion to, to grant the special permit.
Very good. Second?
Second.
Second by Dan DePere. On the motion, Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Eric Kelly?
Yes.
Chairman Perera, yes?
And the filing fee.
To waive the filing fee, which I think is most reasonable.
Motion to waive the filing.
Motion to waive the filing fee. Second by Ricky Sahadi. On the motion, Eric Kelly?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
And Chairman Perera, yes? Get that right off. And, don't move. Item number four, Beverly Pereira, 350 Rochester Street, map R-04, lot 90. The applicant puts forth a motion to extend time for release for a previously granted decision dated November 17th, 2022. The applicant wishes to extend the variance period for a period of six months commencing on November 17th, 2023. Under Mass General Law, section 48, a variance can be extended for a single six-month period if the subject of the, the variance has not been acted upon within one year. So it's completely reasonable. Just need a motion, or actually, hold, hang on. Anybody here to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody to speak in opposition? They're hearing none. If there's no questions from the board, we can move to a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Dan DePere, second by Jim Calkins. On the motion, Eric Kelly?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
And Chairman Perera, yes? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You've got a bunch of stuff going on there, don't you?
Yes, thank you.
I walk my dogs by there all the time and there's electricians and that.
Yeah, we took the garage down ourselves last weekend. I still have your check, you can either come in tomorrow and pick it up or, whenever and pick it up, or I can shred it. You can just shred it, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
Go back with the progress.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Item number five, another name for me to massacre. Ziad and Nasissa, Nasrallah?
Nasrallah.
Went too far off. Zero Florence Street. Wish my address was zero something street. Zero Florence Street, map R-16, lot 80. The applicant seeks a variance to divide the property into two lots, leaving an existing single-family home on one lot and building a new single-family home on the Zero Florence Street lot per a submitted plan in an S single-family zoning district.
Good evening, members of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Christopher Zangary. I'm an attorney with offices at 4236 North Main Street in Fall River. I'm here representing the Nasrallahs in their request for a variance. There's a little bit of history on Zero Florence and I think you already have it in your packet, but in 1987, this very board granted the request that we're asking for and the relief that we're asking for this evening, separating the lots and make them standalone buildable lots. That was granted, it was recorded and we have copies if you don't have it in your packet. And in that decision was set forth the hardship reasons, which are the same as they are today. And in fact, the proposed lot to be created is lot 80, tax assessor's lot 80, on Florence Street. And that lot is presently vacant, it's just wooded, there's nothing on it. The lot has 13,098 square feet of area, which is 1,098 square feet more than the minimum required for lot size. So we need 12,000 square feet, we have more than enough on the new lot. The applicant is seeking to construct a single-family dwelling on that lot. There is town water, town sewer that they will connect to, so it has utilities. The proposed structure will be less than the 25% of lot coverage allowed. In fact, the applicant is proposing 19%. So there's plenty of room, it's under the cap of 25 by 6%. There is no setback relief required in any way. Lot 80, the lot we're talking about, was the subject again of that 1987 Fall River zoning board of appeals subdivision. And the hardship, the applicant would repeat and actually incorporate by reference the, in that decision that was recorded, the same hardship. So the, the board found that, we would agree that that is the same. Now, also, the, kind of the, the rub here is that when, if what we're asking for is granted and you create the second lot, the, the lot that is, has the single-family dwelling already, that's already built, that lot is just under 10,000 square feet. And it's existed that way. Everyone thought it was a standalone lot, except that it came in common ownership with the Stapleton Trust. Now, I would say also that the hardship that's created would be this, that that lot would be of no use. Also, behind that lot is the high school. So it's not as if there's going to be traffic going in and out to get anywhere, it's a dead-end road. So it would be a single-family residence generating a certain amount of traffic, not much. It's residential in a residential zone, so it's not detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. I do have the applicant here. I also have the builder if you're, if you're interested in finding out more about the house. It'll be about a 24, excuse me, 23 square, 2,300 square foot house. And we'll certainly field any questions you have.
I thought this took an extension of Florence Street, but I just realized it doesn't. So when I drove down there the other day, I was in the right spot after all.
Yeah, there's just enough asphalt, it doesn't need any further extension.
Correct.
So the new lot will have roughly 10,000 square feet?
The new lot will have just over 13,000.
Okay.
The existing lot will have just under 10.
So the planning board heard, was it the same issue in 1987?
Yes.
And it was just, was it recorded?
It was. We, if, I have copies if the board would like to see them.
So this exists?
Yes.
As far as registry deeds is concerned?
The A and R plan was, was recorded at the registry? Or just the variance decision?
Just the variance decision.
That's what he said?
Yes, just the variance decision.
Different boards, different boards, different approvals.
Yep.
That's why we're there.
Okay. All right, members of the board, questions? Planning and engineering comment? It's pretty straightforward.
Yep. I mean, there's other permitting to take place, site plan review, consultation, all that stuff.
Glad to see something happening down there, too. And that city, that city property that this butched, correct? I think, doesn't matter, I just.
I, I'm not sure.
Some of those.
Chestnut Street, right?
Chestnut Street, which is a basic street not constructed.
Right.
And then I believe as represented, that's the high school to the
Yep.
to the law portion of the plan.
That is not, it's just one of those curiosities. Whenever you look at it on Google Earth and it's just block of trees in the middle of a very crowded residential neighborhood. All right, very good. Are, are there anybody here to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone to speak in opposition to this petition? They're hearing none, I turn to the board, any questions you might have? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I move the approval of the variance, or the granting of the variance as presented in the detailed plans.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second, discussion on the motion? They're hearing none. Eric Kelly?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
And Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
And Chairman Perera, yes?
Thank you very much, members of the board of appeals. Thank you.
Item number six. Anna Kojukaro, care of attorney Peter A. Salino, 240 Highland Avenue, map M-24, lot 24. The applicant seeks a variance for use and setbacks to construct two residential apartments in the existing carriage house. The applicant also seeks a special permit to 86 dash 445 of the City of Fall River zoning ordinance to reduce the parking requirements in an S single-family zoning district. The applicant also needs a special permit to increase the lot coverage.
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name's Peter Salino, I'm a lawyer in Fall River. With me is Anna Kojukaro. She owns the property located at 240 Highland Avenue. The property currently houses four dwelling units and has a carriage house on the southwest corner of the property. We've submitted, as Mr. Chair just read into the record, an application for a variance and special permit. The variance relates to the use of the property. More specifically, this is an S zoning district. As I indicated, there is an existing four-family there. The carriage house, which is existing, is obviously hugging the property line to the west and to the south. My client's objective is to make that usable space, if you will, but maintaining the exterior character and historical nature of the building. So no external renovations or alterations are proposed in the instant petition, but rather, the proposal is to convert the internal space of the carriage house into two one-bedroom apartments. Additionally, the proposal includes enlarging the existing parking area at a point that would provide one space per unit. So there are six units total with the proposal and there would be six off-street parking spaces. It should also be noted that the existing structure houses three one-bedroom apartments and one multiple-bedroom, multi-floor apartment, which my client resides in with her child. So from the makeup of the, the site currently, we have existing three one-bedroom apartments. And again, my client resides in one. And then the two new units would be one-bedrooms as well, one-bedroom as well. In terms of the hardship component of the petition, as it relates to the variance, I would submit to the board that certainly the lot is in odd shape. Given the angular nature of Highland Avenue and the front property line, that certainly prevents further parking, which if Highland Avenue didn't run at the angle that it runs at, there would be more of a 90-degree angle in the front of my client's property and I'd submit to you there could be more parking placed there. So I would submit to you that that is a hardship. Certainly, the existence of the existing carriage house in its location is a hardship. My client jokingly said it's the house of the squirrels. There are squirrels and various rodents that live in there. And certainly, improving that structure with some apartments would be a nice touch.
And if, if you could get them to pay rent, you wouldn't have to spend money on Attorney Salino.
That's true, that's true. So ultimately, the, I think those are the hardships. In terms of the special permit component, I don't think that the proposal is detrimental to either the neighborhood or the site. As the board well knows, I think, this property is directly across from the hospital. My client is a physician and she envisions and encounters situations all the time with traveling nurses looking for apartments near the hospital. Generally, taking the train and, and/or having one car, mostly single people. So she thinks the concept would be well suited to the location across the street from the hospital. And my final comment would be really that this is an interesting neighborhood composed of a variety of different uses, as the board knows. I know it's certainly an S zoning district, but my law office is in the same S zoning district. And of course, we have a hospital, we have various properties, she abuts the Little Theater. The hot, the house across the street, which was owned by the housing authority, was recently sold to the hospital. And then to the north, you had Dr. Cody's office and several businesses. So it's a mixed-use neighborhood. I think the proposal is reasonable and I would be happy to entertain any questions from the board relative to the proposal.
Curious on, on the parking now, you've got, you have four units, your commute is terrible every day. How many, so there's no problem parking, what, four cars, five cars that exist now?
I have only.
Because I know it's not lined off or anything, so.
No, I have one car per unit, a single people who live here. In a bigger apartment, I'm only one person, you know, kids are small, so one car and it's no problem.
Okay. Questions from the board?
So if I understand, Mr. Chairman, there are two special permits to acquire.
That is lot coverage and the parking reduction.
In addition to the variance.
That's correct. And I, I'm glad you brought that up. The lot coverage right now is 54 and the proposal, I'm sorry, it's 53 and the proposal's 57. So we're asking for 4% more than what's existing.
So we're asking for a variance as to use because it is a single-family district, but it's already a non-conforming use, so wouldn't it be a permit to expand the existing non-conforming use? but it's already a non-conforming use, so wouldn't it be a permit to expand the existing non-conforming use?
Because it's a different structure, I think variance is probably the more appropriate. Because you have to deal with this structure.
The safer way to go.
Being a dwelling that does not meet the building's requirements.
True.
It's a garage.
Yep. It's a carriage shed.
Yeah.
It was a, it was an apartment for horses once upon a time.
Has three levels. But the basement is not livable, but it has a full basement and, you know.
Yeah, it's a great building.
Foundation, yeah.
That'd make a great legal office.
Lord or Doctor, that's a lot of jokes on one block.
All right, questions, other questions? Anybody here?
Yeah, just has the existing carriage house got utilities going to it now?
Is there electrical going in there?
Electrical, yes. Nothing else.
No water?
No, no, no. The horseman was living there a hundred and something years ago and they didn't need a toilet, although he was living upstairs.
Well, I mean, you know, as far as the connections, you're gonna have to probably tear up the driveway anyway or what's there now, so that's, that's for them to work out. They've got a good engineer. Anything from planning and engineering?
The only concern that I would have is that, you know, for a subdivision, once it gets done.
Yeah.
So what that means is you can't put a line right here and sell separately.
Okay, yep.
Reasonable. Somewhere down the line, yeah. Okay. Anybody to speak in favor of the petition? Anybody to speak in opposition? They're hearing none, I turn to the board with any last questions you might have. Contemplate how you want to move on this. So we have variance as to use in converting the.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the variance for use of the carriage house as a residential unit.
Two residential, two apartments.
Residential.
With no further sub, with no further subdivision, is that correct? With no further subdivision?
We can put that in any of these pieces.
Okay.
Get it out of the way. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Dan DePere. Okay, any further discussion, any discussion on the motion? They're hearing none, Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Eric Kelly?
Yes.
Chairman Pera, yes. On the matter of the special permit. Which pertains to parking and lot.
With a lot, lot coverage issue.
Yep.
Then we will, we need that to be divided, we don't need it divided for the parking, right?
No. Parking will not be bifurcated, but the lot coverage would be.
So we could do both of them?
We can do both, yep.
Mr. Chairman, I find that the proposed request for a special permit would not be more detrimental to the area either as it affects lot coverage or parking number.
You have a second on that, please?
Second.
Second by Ricky Sahadi. On the motion, Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Eric Kelly?
Yes.
Chairman Pera, yes.
And Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the special permit.
And that is in regard to coverage.
As relates to lot's coverage and parking.
And parking, so the parking requirement is one parking space per unit will be provided off-street parking. It's getting to be a thing, isn't it? Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Second by Ricky Sahadi. On the motion, Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Eric Kelly?
Yes.
Joe Pera, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it, thank you.
Stop by the sheriff's office so you can evict the squirrels and other rodents. Item number seven, I'm still not seeing our, oh, he was in Somerset tonight? It's gonna be a long night in Somerset tonight.
He was early.
Doesn't matter, I, that's gonna be a beast. Item number seven, Fatima Rodriguez, four fifty-two South Street, South Main Street. Map one dash O, I dash O eight, lot four. The applicant seeks a variance to convert the existing commercial structure into two residential units in a CBD commercial business zoning district. We have a letter, is it here? Come on, Pera.
Yep, there it is.
Oh, table.
Well, I think it's gonna be more on the table than that.
Want the hardcover?
Yeah, that'd be easier. Oh, look at this. Dixon Paul. This one?
Yeah, that's it.
We have a letter dated October nineteen, twenty twenty-three to Ms. Nina Kruger in the planning department. Dear Ms. Kruger, it was a pleasure speaking to you this morning and thank you for accepting this letter as our formal request to table the application for four fifty-two South Main Street, scheduled to be heard this evening. We will instead table this application to be heard at the November hearing and will deliver the final piece of information on Monday, October twenty-third. Could you please let me know if there are any changes to be applied, yada, yada? I cannot, Christopher Velisa of Federal Hill Group LLC Architects.
I already informed him of the tabling fee, he said that they would have that in on Monday.
Okay, that's very good, that's the missing item they're talking about, the tabling fee, I love it.
Well, we're gonna be getting revised plans.
Yep, yep. My, yep, I understand. We have a a motion on the requested table. To November.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve tabling the matter until the November meeting, second, please?
Second.
Second by Eric Kelly. On the motion, Eric Kelly?
Yes.
Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
And Chairman Pera, yes, okay.
That's November sixteenth.
November sixteenth, did I say fifteenth?
Oh, no, you just said November.
Item number eight, Kevin Olivera, three thirty-four Vale Street, map E zero one, lot fifty. The applicant seeks a variance to divide the property into two separate lots, leaving the five-family dwelling on one lot of the existing commercial building, which be, which will be converted to residential use on the other lot. Waving all requirements in the B one local business zoning district. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, Jeff Tolman from Northeast Engineers and Consultants, here with Kevin Olivera, the owner and petitioner for this application before the board. I'm sure this may look familiar to most, if not all of you, as this application has been before this board, was before the board back in April of two thousand, no, I'm sorry, October of two thousand twenty-two, a year ago. At that time, we had, we had come in with a proposal to subdivide the the property into the two lots, similar to, you know, similar manner to what's shown here. But that proposal was, we were gonna maintain the commercial use of the the commercial structure located on the south side of the the property. This, the commercial use has been in existence since nineteen eighty-seven in some form or fashion. Back in nineteen eighty-seven, there was a variance that was granted for this property to convert what I believe to have been a garage into a commercial space, which I believe was a pet grooming business. And coincidentally enough, at that time, they were also given permission to divide the property. They acted on converting the structure to a commercial unit, but they never followed through with the A and R plan, the subsequent A and R plan, to actually divide the property, which you, I do, you know, see quite often. That happens when people think they get a variance, they think it's divided and then they only find out years later that it's not actually the case. So anyways, moving forward, we were here a year ago with that proposal. At that time, the commercial space had been used within the past twelve months. The previous owner of the property operated a home improvement business out of that that space. But at the time of the purchase by Mr. Olivera, the space was vacant. And if I remember correctly, at that meeting, the the major concern of the board at that time was the uncertainty of what was gonna happen with that commercial space, what it was gonna be used for. So that that petition ended up getting denied and I believe it was for that particular reason. So in April of two thousand twenty-three, we went to the planning board with a slightly different proposal, eliminating the commercial component on this property and proposing to convert the commercial structure into a one residential unit. The planning board reviewed it and sort, basically voted and said that the, we had made specific and material changes at that point, which allowed us to come back before this board with this presentation. So basically, what what we're looking to do at this time, again, is just, we're looking to take that existing commercial building, convert it to a single residential apartment, whether it be a studio, I'm not sure. But it would maintain the footprint that you're seeing here and we would be providing two off-street parking spots at the rear of the dwelling for that residential use. There are two spots, two parking spots on the property now. One of them would be removed in order to get the driveway back to provide the parking for the second lot. But part of this, as part of this proposal, we would be installing thirty linear feet of curving on on Vale Street. That would provide additional, at least one, possibly two additional on on-street parking spots for the neighborhood. So even though we are losing the one onsite, we are providing the two additional behind and possibly two additional on the street. With that, you know, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
So the separation of lots as shown here have been previously approved?
I don't know if it was in this exact fashion, but it was approved to be divided into two lots with the commercial building being on one lot and the residents being on a separate lot.
Substantially the same. The driveway, bit there. Substantially the same, point is, A and R plan wasn't recorded. Here we are. All right, comments from planning?
Nope. I'm, I would be concerned about the number of bedrooms in the unit, but you know, we ask those things.
Concerned in what way, Dan?
Excuse me?
Concerned in what way?
Just the number of bedrooms that might be in the unit. I mean, if it's a five-bedroom unit, how many parking spaces would that require?
So you're not sure, Jeff, how many?
We don't have any plans as of yet for the layout of the building. If it maintains its current height, I I would say it would just be maximum probably one, maybe two. I don't foresee this ever being any more than three. Whether or not somebody comes along and wants to add an additional story to it, we'd certainly be comfortable if the board felt it, the need to restrict it to a certain number of bedrooms. Would be amenable to that.
You're not asking for relief to add a floor to it?
No, no, we're just asking to convert it to a residential use.
The way that it is, if you wanted to go up, it would most likely have to come back.
Right. And with the lot separated, you'll now have two parking spaces in the back. Where is, where's any, that same area, is that accommodating parking for some other residents of the five-family?
The commercial building?
No.
Oh, oh, the rear, no, no. So basically, you see where it's the number one on the, yeah, the off-street parking spot, there's one basically directly to the south of that. Those are the two off-street parking spots that are on the property now. And there's a fence, yeah, you can see the fence that ties the the building, the commercial building.
Losing one.
Right.
But picking up two on the street.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. Okay. Is there anybody, any other questions from the board?
So the parking of the existing five is located in lot two?
There were, there's two parking spaces for the existing five. Where you see the number one?
Yeah.
There's a single off-street parking, parking space that comes directly in off the street. And then the other one where it says relocate, where it just reads relocated stairs, there's a parking space there. So it is on what's now, what would be a, in a second lot.
Yeah, we would need to lose that in order to get the driveway in to access the two additional parking spots to the rear. But there is, there is a thirty-foot curb cut on the street that we would be eliminating and installing granite curving to provide additional on-street parking.
What are you thinking, Jim?
Look at the other plan, Jim, you're looking at, the plan that's up there has more detail than what you're looking at.
Mr. Chairman, if I may also, I represent Mr. Olivera and I just have one comment, so I apologize.
Please.
Just the one other thing that when we were doing this plan, myself and Mr. Tolman, trying to see what was best for the for the city, we we would like to note that we believe we're making this a less detrimental use to the neighborhood because, quite honestly, other than the subdivision, we still would have a commercial use there and God knows what that would do for the neighborhood in terms of actual traffic. So we felt as though this particular use and the configuration that we put forth before this board tonight would be a less detrimental use to the neighborhood, especially when we do then take out the curb cut and add additional parking. So that's one of the things that did go into why we made this decision to present this before the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And the petitioner just did mention to me, he would have no problem capping it as a two-bedroom, a residential unit, no more than two bedrooms.
And then to your concern, so the, to be converted means be converted as the building sits now?
That's correct.
If they wanted to build up, they would have to come back?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, fine.
I don't know what height the building is now, but they would be.
It's low.
But I mean, as it sits now.
Showing no, showing no construction activity other than the conversion of the interior.
As the building sits.
Yeah.
And you're, you're comfortable with two bedrooms?
Yes, yeah.
The building's not that large, it was twenty-three by forty-three or something like that.
Size of it, yeah.
Okay. All right, anybody here to speak in favor of this, in support of this petition? Anyone to speak in opposition? Any other comments from the board? All right, we have pieces, all pieces. So we are seeking a variance to divide the property into two separate lots, the five-family on one, the single current commercial building on the second. We're waiving all requirements in the BL local business zoning district at that point.
Mr. Chairman.
Wait, one quick question. No, it's it's in the BL.
Utilities are already separate, or?
Yeah. Utilities will have to be separated, et cetera, okay. I'm thinking crazy because it's not in the commercial zone. We don't need to change the use of the building. But do we?
Of which building?
Of the commercial building.
It it's allowed, but it's not allowed on that size piece of land. So yes, you would have to, you're allowing the conversion of that that building.
So it's all tangled in the same.
Yeah, especially where the use of that garage was granted by a variance, so you can only change it by a variance.
By a variance, yeah. Sorry, Jim, I interrupted you.
I was just gonna move that the variance be granted in accordance with the specifications admitted.
Separation of utilities.
And, yeah, and a site review.
Back to site plan.
Jim, do you want to stipulate also maximum of two bedrooms?
Yeah.
I would accept that.
Yeah, maximum two bedrooms in the current commercial building to be converted. Anything else? Have a motion, can you have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, on the motion, Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Eric Kelly?
Yes.
Chairman Pera, yes.
Good luck. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Item number. Item number nine, Fall River Deaconess Home, three oh nine French Street, map M twenty-four, lot sixteen. The applicant requests a special permit pursuant to section eighty-six dash four twenty-five in the City of Fall River zoning ordinance to allow the extension of a non-conforming structure and allow a five percent increase in lot coverage above the existing forty percent that the site has. The applicant intends to construct an eight hundred square foot addition in the southwest corner of the existing dwelling. Property is located in a, an S, Single Family Zoning District.
Good evening. For the record, Jeff Tolman from Northeast Engineers and Consultants, and here with me tonight is Hilda Monas, the Vice President of Operations for the Fall River Deaconess Home. Quite simply, what we're looking to do here is we have a, a, a non-conforming structure based on existing setbacks to the structure on a conforming lot located in the S District. This lot's been used in its current manner since, I believe, at least nineteen seventy, if not before. What the Deaconess Home is looking to do is they need additional space, and I can let Ms. Monas speak to that, but they're looking to simply put an eight hundred square foot addition off the back, off the southwest corner of, of the building. The addition itself would comply with the setback requirements, the side setback requirements and rear setback requirements in that area. And it would, the addition would cause a slight increase, five percent increase in the, the lot coverage on the property. The existing lot coverage is forty percent now. It would bring the lot coverage up to forty-five percent. So we do need relief. We ask for a special permit on the lot coverage as well, in addition to the expansion of the, the non-conformant structure. Would you like to explain?
Yes. That's cute. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. So the space, we're not increasing occupancy. The purpose is to increase, not to increase, but to continue our clinical services. We're just doing more clinical services with the adolescents that we serve at this time, but it won't be increasing staffing. The staffing already currently exists, as well as the occupancy of the youth. We're not increasing beds. It's going to be two clinical rooms, which will be used for training space and specific therapeutic services for the current and any future youth that come to the program.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. Questions from the board?
So the youth that will be serviced in the clinic are current residents?
Yes.
There will not be outpatient services?
No, they're, they're, we currently provide those services. Thank you. We currently provide the services, we're just running out of space. We've added a therapeutic dog, we want to do more clinical, different kinds of treatment.
Yeah, we're just trying to look at the impact on the neighborhood.
Yeah, correct. No, there won't be out, it's not going to be outpatient services.
From a planning, engineering standpoint, nothing? Any other questions? Anybody here to speak in support of the petition? Anyone to speak in opposition? They're hearing none. I'll accept, I'll accept a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I find that this will not be substantive nor detrimental to the area.
Okay, you have a second on that?
Second.
Second, Dan DePere. On the motion, Eric Kelly.
Yes.
Jim Calkins.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi.
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes. And on the special permit.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the special permit as submitted.
Second.
Okay, and that is increasing lot coverage from the existing forty percent by, by five percent for the construction of the eight hundred foot addition. You have a second?
Second.
On the motion, Ricky Sahadi.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Jim Calkins.
Yes.
Eric Kelly.
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Great work.
Thank you.
All right. Item number ten, Savoy Street LLC, one eleven Savoy Street, map L zero nine, lot seventy-three. The applicant seeks a variance to divide the existing five thousand square foot parcel into two lots, leaving the existing single-family dwelling on one lot and constructing a new single-family dwelling on the second lot, waiving all requirements in the single-family S zoning district. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Attorney Gregory Brilliant, and I have a law office at one eleven Oak Grove Avenue here in the City of Fall River, Massachusetts. I'm here representing Savoy Street LLC and its principals, Mr. and Mrs. Paul Ferraro, who are to my right. As the chairman rightfully said, we are requesting, this petition is to subdivide the property at one eleven Savoy Street into two lots, leaving the existing single-family on one lot and creating a second lot, and we propose to build a twenty-two by fifty-foot home on the second lot. If the, if the board is aware this particular lot is, is...
Twenty-two by thirty-four.
Twenty-two by...
Thirty-four maximum.
I apologize, I went from the twenty-five to the twenty-five. Twenty-two by thirty-four, so I apologize. The configuration of, of, of the lot lends itself that the current house is way over to the northerly side of the lot, okay? And leaves, and leaves a portion of the property basically of no use whatsoever, okay? And that's why we're going to, our petition is to create a new lot, which is fifty-two by one hundred square feet. Ironically enough, and the board may or may not know this, directly across the street is a general residence district, which had, which, if this lot that we're creating was on the other side of the street, it would be a legal lot. Okay, so because it's on this side and somehow pillared in between the general residence district across the street and the general residence district that's up the hill and the church, it's stuck in a single-family residence district, and that's why we have to come before you tonight. I, I want to make very, very clear that what we're trying to do, we are going to meet all of the side yard requirements, the rear yard requirements and the front yard requirements on a newly created lot. So we're meeting all of those requirements so as not to, to jeopardize the neighborhood. I, I would like to point out, as I just stated, we have a situation here where if had, he had been on the other side of the, the street, he could actually build the house. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I apologize, man, look, I didn't get this before the meeting. These, these are just some pictures. This is all within the block.
Mr. Kelly. Mr. Sahadi.
These are all within the block. These are all, these are all, um, lots that are five thousand dollars or less. A couple of them were pursuant to subdivisions that had already been granted, one as recently as two thousand twenty-one on London Street. So I point that only because we're not going to go into this neighborhood and completely change the, the, the nature of the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood. This is actually consistent with the neighborhood, probably more consistent than a larger home being built in that area. I, I, I know this is not the situation where it would be an in-law apartment, but it's an accessory use, and I say this because of, the situation is this, Mr. and Mrs. Ferraro's mother, elderly mother, live at one eleven Savoy Street. The reason why they want to build this house is because they want their, their niece, Mrs. Ferraro's granddaughter, to come into Fall River in order to take care of her. Okay, they're, obviously she, she wants to buy it at some point in time, she doesn't have the funds to buy it right now. They're going to build a house, the niece is going to move in, and part of the deal is for them, for her, the niece, to take care of the grandmother. So I know it's not what, what's anticipated with accessory use, because I know Mr. Aggy and this board and, and the city are, are working on a potential accessory use ordinance, which I think is a good thing for the city. But this is the kind of concept that we're going to use. Here, here is a, a rendering, and the Ferraros took obviously a lot of time. It's a very small house, and she's young, she's going to take care of her grandmother, and you have a nice place to live. We're going to offer off-street parking for both, um, two off-street parking minimum for both properties, so we will not be creating any problem whatsoever on the street. It's a tight street, and most people, I, actually, most, I was surprised because I went there yesterday and today, and there's a lot of parking on the street. We will not have that problem whatsoever. It's a very well-maintained piece of property at one eleven. We believe the new construction will be likewise, very, very clean, neat, and, and I think a credit to the neighborhood. Mr. Tolman, who did the plans and has worked tirelessly on this project, as well as here to answer any questions, as well as the Ferraros who sit in the audience.
What's the, what's the LC parcel line?
Excuse me?
There's a notation on here, there's a dash line on the plans, called the LC parcel line.
So basically, the, the parcel itself is a combination of two, two parcels. There's a registered land parcel and an unregistered land parcel, registered land being land court. So the, in, this is still, well, lot seventy-two, the original lot seventy-two, I want to say, I believe this currently goes by lot seventy-three, but lot seventy-two was a registered land parcel located to the south, with lot seventy-three being the unregistered land located to the north. When the house number one eleven was originally constructed, it was on a separate parcel, lot seventy-three. At some point along the, the way, there was an addition, and you can see it from the image, there was an addition put on the, the right side or south side of that dwelling that slightly went over that line, which is not uncommon when you see these, a scenario like this, where there'd be two land court lots in common ownership or unregistered, registered land in common ownership, to go over that interior line, it's really not a concern of the building apartment at the time, but, you know, they went over, I want to say the houses over by like two feet. But, you know, when, when you look at the, the legality of it, and we have done some research on this, it's still not entirely clear, but it, it's in question whether or not land court lots are subject to the merger statute. So this has been merged because of its, its in common ownership by the assessors' office, but if it's actually, it's unclear if it's actually been merged. We're, we're doing some additional research on that, that, that's something that we've looked into, but in going over this project with, with the petitioner and with Mr. Brilliant, we feel this kind of stands on its own, even if there was no registered land and unregistered land involved here, what we are proposing. But that is, you know, that is a factor, and that is something to consider with this application, that, you know, there are technically two lots, because a registered land has its own certificate, it's not like, it, it's just taking a deed and putting the two lots on a deed. It's something entirely different, and it will maintain that status unless it is removed from land court.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and, and Mr. Tolman is exactly right, we wanted to be totally transparent, because we're not quite sure whether or not the merger principle is in effect here, but rather to come in and make that argument and further compound it, we, we didn't want to make that argument, because we wanted to be crystal clear and transparent as to what we wanted to do. There is some question as to whether land court and non-land court land merges, but having no definitive, uh, legal backup for that right now, we choose not to make that argument in order, again, to be as transparent as possible, so this board knows exactly what we're doing and exactly what our intent is here.
Yeah, and it, it would seem as if you, you still have a road to, to travel here with this, with this lot, dealing with land court and finding out, you know, what you may or may not be able to do.
If this variance is, if this variance is granted, we may take it out of land court.
Well, the lots would have merged by the non-conformity of building over the, over the property line.
Right.
So they would have merged for that purpose anyway, regardless of whether it was registered or unregistered.
True.
So the lots have merged. There's, there's no discussion about that.
They still have to take it out of, out of land court.
We may only because it, right now, and...
Makes things easier.
It makes things easier. That's probably what we're going to do.
Right, because we'd be dividing this land court lot.
Right.
Dividing land court lots is land court's business.
Understood.
The A and R process still gets done here.
Correct. So I'm not even, all I'm saying is...
Don't even consider the land court.
That's basically what I was trying to say.
We can still divide the property.
Yes, you can.
That's within our purview.
Yes.
You're not bound by land.
It could be registered in, in, you know, Berlin, Maine, it doesn't matter.
You are correct, Mr. Perry, very much so. And that's why we didn't want to complicate it with it. It's a very good question, but we didn't want to complicate the land court, not like...
It's not complicated at all.
Yeah.
It's not complicated at all. And since we, since we don't have in-law apartments, I think I actually prefer this as a route. That's me. Questions from the board? Comments from the board? I don't get presentations like this when we do like four hundred years ago.
Trust me, if Mr. Ferraro had his way, you'd probably have a presentation even larger.
What did you do? You retired now?
No.
No? What do you, what do you do? I'm just curious.
I'm a flooring contractor.
Flooring contractor, yeah. Just curious, I, I don't know. I don't know if you were an architect. Questions, none? We are in a single family, we have a lot that is conforming by area, we're creating two non-conforming lots by dividing this. That's just something to keep in mind, that we are creating two non-conforming lots as, as a result of, if, by giving, by giving this permission.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing, just that we don't have third street all over again. Although the, the petition is to waive all zoning requirements, it's to be approved in accordance with the submitted plan.
Right.
So they can't come back and build something that's not shown on this plan.
There's already house plans drawn up for that particular house, as you can see through the level of detail that's on the rendering here.
Well, that's why I chose to build for that.
Yeah. We, we obviously assent to that.
We don't anticipate any variance from what you see here.
Yeah, no, I, the only thing that, and, and Mr. Aggy points it out, I get, I get nervous when we use language like, you know, waiving all zoning requirements, because that's, that's saying dimensional use, et cetera. So by saying we're waiving all the zoning requirements, you can put a gas station there. So...
Yes.
It's bad use of, bad use of, of words. We never use the word variance enough in this, in this city. That's, that's another battle to be fought another day. It's not your battle. Is there anyone to speak in support of this petition? Anyone to speak in opposition? They're hearing none. Cleaning up that piece of language. Entertainer motion from the board. Are there any last questions? Let's do them now.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the variance according to the specifications submitted in the plans.
Just one question, is it bifurcated? Is this bifurcated?
No.
No, it's a variance, so it's straight to the variance. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second, Eric Kelly. And on the motion, Eric Kelly.
Yes.
Jim Calkins.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi.
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, all right.
Mr. Chairman, we can take the extension next, and then if Attorney Lawrence doesn't make it, Attorney Salina will be...
Oh, excellent.
Well, I thought I was filling in.
You want to, don't move. You don't have this one, you have...
No.
The beautiful thing is they're both charging them. I love the smile. Item number eleven, Brian Deera, eleven seventy-four and twelve oh four Pleasant Street, map K thirteen, lots forty-three, forty-five, and seventy. The applicant puts forth a motion to extend time for relief from a previously granted decision dated November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. The applicant wishes to extend the variance relief for a period of six months commencing on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. It's stated earlier, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under forty A allows the extension of a variance by a six-month period if the variance has not been acted upon in a one-year period. Hello?
Hello.
Your name for the record, please.
My name is LaSeta Vieira. I'm Brian's wife.
Just tell me what happened and why you haven't acted yet.
I can help.
Sure.
So the variance was granted, took a while for site plan review to get completed, some legality with regards to easements, and it's had like a cross-parking agreement as part of the relief, for one building, and the ability to be constructed, this or there. Site plan review was finally done, conditional approval was getting the, the easement document finalized, and that's still in the process of getting done.
All right. Wheels of progress.
It's been backwards.
Very backward.
That's okay. Questions from the board? Pretty clean. Accept a motion to extend, no. Anybody in favor? Anybody in opposition? They're hearing none, will accept a motion.
Motion to grant.
Second.
Motion to grant, seconded to grant an extension of six months to the variance issued in November of twenty twenty-two. On the motion, Ricky Sahadi.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Jim Hawkins.
Yes.
Eric Kelly.
Yes.
And Chairman Pror, yes. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Okay. Look at this. This is going to be a good one. They've got two attorneys involved, they'll love it. Some of you LLC.
You guys can all come, please.
Everybody, just, you know.
Takes two of us to fill out the choose.
Yeah.
Kirov, attorney Thomas P. Corlorn. Portraying the role of Thomas P. Corlorn tonight is Peter Salino. Summit Street, map B zero-two, lot twenty-one. The applicant seeks a variance to allow the construction of six duplex townhouse dwellings, twelve units total, in an R four, two-family zoning district, as well as another variance to increase the maximum lot coverage from thirty percent to sixty percent.
Good evening. So Peter Salino filling in for Tom. Tom is tied up in Somerset ZBA with a home occupation that's taken like an hour and fifteen minutes. So I agreed that I would step in and come from the bullpen, do some jujitsu with Mr. Tolman over here. That's the new one. Okay, so for the proposal. The proposal is to develop the lot shown as B two twenty-one into, uh, six duplex style units, twelve total units. From a historical perspective, the board should be aware that this site adjoins the former Atlantis Charter School. And to steal a line from Mark Levin, the Montessori school, when I went there. And ultimately, I didn't, I did not. And ultimately, when the former owner Casa LLC permitted this site, the school was permitted for apartments. The site that is in front of you this evening was going to be a little bit larger, and the proposal included more duplex units. Ultimately, the school was changed to a daycare-type use. Needed some land as a result of that. The parcel that's in front of you was diminished, and ultimately, the relief sought is to reduce the number of units, consistent in ratio and scope with what was previously approved, but taking into account that there's less land here.
Okay, and they did tear down that other building that was going to be apartments.
The Green Monster.
The Green, yeah, the Green Monster, exactly. That's going, yeah.
Yeah, the, and just to elaborate a little bit, the initial proposal was for the eight duplex-style buildings. This one obviously for the six. And as you can see on the plan here, that parcel B two twenty-two was the parcel that was cut out of the original piece that was granted the variance and conveyed over to the school property. For, the intent is to make it part of the playground use. They're going to move the playground from the old Charter School up in that location, and they have a driveway that goes around for drop-off purposes. So they needed to expand for the school use. And so that, that's why this project has been downsized.
That playground was here originally, right? If I'm not mistaken.
The playground was on this, on this parcel, yes. Scoring up one terrace level.
Yep.
But I can tell the board that in nineteen eighty-five, it was there.
Did you skin your knees?
I did.
All right. Well, it's less dense than it was before, so... Any questions from the board at this point? Comments? Jujitsu moves? So the parking, is you're going to provide two spaces? Do you include any inside garage?
Each, each unit has a one-stall garage.
Right.
And then it'd be parking, two, room for two spaces out in the driveway in front.
So three spaces each.
Three spaces total, okay. And that's each unit.
One garage space, and then two spaces in front of the garage.
Yeah, see, I don't, I don't usually count on the garage space, because you just fill it up with stuff where you can't fit cars. But that, no, that's good.
Listen, all, all these parking spaces, it doesn't mean people have to use them.
Right, right. All these parking spaces are fine unless you drive an F two fifty. All right. Anybody in the audience to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone to speak in opposition?
I don't have opposition. I would just like to know where.
Could you just identify yourself and address, please?
Yes, I live on five forty-one Summit Street, directly across from the jungle playground that is right now.
Okay.
What is the, the name?
So I just wondered, um...
I'm sorry, what, what's your name, ma'am?
Nancy Coquelin.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So, I just wanted to know where the traffic's going to be coming out of these townhouses. Is it going to be coming out right in front of my house? Or, because we, already, we have the early learning center there now, which is, is much nicer than when the Atlantis Charter School was there, because the whole street was full of cars. But still, you know, they're parking both sides of Summit already. Summit is a wide street, thankfully. And, so now we're going to have all these people coming in and out of these townhouses. And a lot of these parents, they U-turn on the street, and they park in front of driveways, and, you know, do all those common things that the school, when they pick up their children, do. So, I was just wondering, you know, how the traffic's going to be and whereabouts they're going to put an outlet for all these cars to be coming out.
Well, the cars for the townhouses, you're at number five forty-one, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, yes, the, the driveway opening for the townhouses is shown, is directly across the street from, from your house. It's a twenty-two-foot-wide driveway. As to the parking situation, again, each one of these units has
Three.
Three parking spaces assigned to it. A garage and two parking spaces, a small driveway in the, in the front of the property. So I can't imagine, especially if you lived in one of the back units, why you'd want to park on, on Copeland Street, on Summit Street, rather. And, you know, when we talk about things like, you know, the school, I used to live adjacent to a school, and same thing, people would be, you know, motoring in front of my driveway. And that's, that's a police matter.
Yeah.
It seems like that's a bigger problem, in my opinion, than this will be, because they've actually, you know, done exactly what it's supposed to do for parking, a little bit more. So, it's, it's, you know, it's sound in that regard.
Excuse me, they could move that, so it's like not directly, or move it down a little, or?
And the problem is that these units are facing each other. They'd have to, I'll let, I'll let the, the design engineer speak to that, but in order to do that, they'd have to redesign the whole thing.
It does have to be centered, and, and I would like to add that that driveway that we're showing on that plan is in this same exact location as was shown on the previous plan that was approved in two thousand twenty-one. The three units on the, on the west side are in the exact same location.
Yep, okay.
Previous, the previous approval had a horseshoe-style driveway.
Yep.
So in the middle were two units, and then there were three more, where you see lot twenty-two on that B, B two. That's where the additional three units were. So we eliminated, you know, half, well, most of that horseshoe. We just have the one driveway coming out exactly where we had it before. And the, you know, three houses that were like originally on twenty-two have been pushed to the, to the west and fronting on the driveway.
Mrs. Copeland, were you living here in, in twenty twenty-one when the other approval was given?
I came to the last meeting.
Pardon?
I came to the last meeting.
You did?
About the school with all the apartments and everything they were going to put in and everything. Yeah, it's, you know, it's sad in a way, because this, we're, we're living in suburbia out there, down the south end of the city. It's not like downtown Fall River. And, you know, I, all these things make money. I know, like today, that's the big thing, you know, making the money. That's really important. But this is a nice little neighborhood, and, you know, and this looks much better than what was proposed earlier. Indeed. Because I didn't know I'd have a three-starred condo in my backyard at that point. I don't think, we didn't know about that. I never got a notification on that. So my backyard, right next to my backyard on the left, was a landlocked piece of property that somebody has now put, I guess they're condos, and there's three of them, which I think he's only supposed to have two, but he's got three. But that's another story. And he's also making a nice driveway for himself. It's a right-of-way, and he's turned it into a huge driveway. I don't know who owns that property.
I can look into it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll check into that.
I don't know how big a right-of-way it's supposed to be, but this one's pretty wide.
I, I can actually speak to that as I permitted that, and it was permitted for a three-family.
Okay, a three-family.
Yeah, it was a triplex.
I thought you could only have two lines on the street, but maybe I'm wrong.
Yes.
Which can be, I mean, that's...
Yeah, and that was given relief, zoning relief.
Is that the long driveway that's, that's just two doors down from the Copeland's property?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe it's on the other side of five fifty-one.
Yeah, it doesn't show on here, but...
Just on the east side.
Mrs. Copeland, I think if you look at the plan, granted, it's less units than what was approved before.
Yeah.
But specifically to the location of the driveway, what that driveway does, although the vehicles for the six units will use that driveway, no one can park across the street in front of your house because of that driveway. So that's, that's a benefit. So if you're backing out of your driveway, it's not like you've got to deal with somebody across the street as you're backing out, so...
Yeah, that would be nice.
That may not answer all of your questions, but there is a benefit to the driveway being there.
Yeah.
Whereas if they shift the driveway, you're going to have cars in front of your house now instead of the driveway.
Yeah.
The driveway's short-term, morning, night. Cars may be parked there all the time.
Yeah.
So that's, that's at least one positive that I can see out of having the driveway there.
Yeah, I feel like a sandwich where I'm living now. I mean, I used to have all the wits about my house, so, you know, it's, the noise level, everything's changed.
The street in front of your house.
But anyway, so this, we'll go back to this, and the school, you know, the nice little school at the top of the street that we have now. So is that going to stay? Is that going to keep adding on grades to it, like the Charter School did? Or is it going to just stay the way it is?
No idea.
No idea.
I mean, it did, I, it, it doesn't fall under our purview in any way, shape, or form, so it's a daycare currently, or is it?
No, it's...
It's follow of a school department.
It is follow of a school department.
Yeah, preschool department.
Oh, all right, that's strictly preschool.
So it's exempt, because it's already exempt.
Yeah.
And that's going to stay as a school? It's not going to go into a park?
No, it would have to come back here again.
Okay.
And it's, I'm pretty sure it's going to stay a school forever.
Okay, good.
It's a very popular building, I mean, that's...
Yeah, it looks very nice. They've done a nice job.
They've done a lot to it, so that is, that is nice. And, you know, the, the traffic you get, dropping on, picking up kids, that's how it got changed.
It's not as bad as the Charter School.
But that's short. It's a short period of time.
I believe that was originally proof of forty units, too, if I'm not mistaken, so...
Yeah, it was forty units, and then it was the sixteen for the wall.
Yeah.
I know, because it is suburbs. Most of the residences there have one piece of property and one home, not forty residences on one piece of property. So, you know, that's, that's the important thing. Whether it was approved before or not, it's still mostly residences.
Well, now it's, now it's City of Fall River, and it's servicing as a school, so I think it's probably pretty soon.
Let's hope the school doesn't want to buy that piece and then put another school in front of there.
No, we appreciate you coming in, though. We hear you concerned.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that one with the gentleman.
And I hope that, you know, the explanation helps. I mean, it is two less buildings over there for this, for this particular...
That makes a big difference. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? There'd be no one else. Questions from the board? Did we say how many bedrooms are in these? They're all twos?
Two or three, I, I don't... That's a good question. I'm not exactly sure. I don't have the application. Here.
Is it the same building as the other one, as some of the others?
Yeah.
I don't know how many bedrooms were in it.
We'd have to go back to the prior decision.
No, I have a decision. I'm, I'm saying that there are some, these units are being built, I think, in a city somewhere now.
Oh, the same design?
Yeah, I think.
I don't see anything in the filing regarding that.
Can you check the applicant, Jeff?
Attorney Corlorn would probably be happy to have a friendly word right now.
It's in the middle of the hearing. Tommy just lost forty-seven dollars and fifty cents by not being, yeah.
But I'm going to teach him jujitsu.
I just love when she brought up the condominium, that, that the city planner and the chairman of the board looking, and he's all like, I have no idea what we're talking about.
No, that was done a while ago.
Yeah. Mike, he passed his bedtime, but he's usually pretty good at getting back right away.
I'm getting a response from Tom here. It's got those bubbles.
Oh, three.
Three?
Three-bedroom units, yes.
They're all threes?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, then we need this reparking space.
Right.
Well, it's still what would be two, right?
No, 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 it's still.
What's that?
Still two, two per resident.
They're saying you have three if you need.
Yeah, we have the extra one.
Yeah, we're good.
There are garages here, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Does that have to go back to site plan?
Yes, it never went through site plan.
It never went through site plan, okay.
The school pulled the plug on that.
Great. All right. No more questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move granting of the, uh, variance as submitted.
Site plan review?
Yeah, with that requirement, yes. Second.
Motion and second, so that's a variance to allow construction of six duplex townhouses uh, in the R4 two-family zoning district. There's actually a second variance to accrete maximum lot coverage from the 30 lot to 60%. Can we have a second? On the motion. I'm gonna give you the last, second, the last one. Ricky Sahadi.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Uh, Jim Cawkins.
Yes.
Eric Kelly.
Yes.
And Chairman Prairie, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, you rock coming in from the bullpen. Thank you.
No problem.
Couple pitches. All right. Where am I?
What on earth, the fee schedule?
Uh, the fee schedule.
Oh. So, let me give you the, the rundown. Uh, as you know, when we changed the fee schedule, we discussed at the last meeting, no one had anticipated having 400-unit apartment.
Right.
So, um, the last ones, the last two that we dealt with, each one of them will require to submit over $40,000 worth of review fees, which is a bit.
Yeah.
Out there. So, I had wanted to come back and ask you to make, or recommend or vote to make a modification to that, for what you have there now, which is, you know, you get to a certain point, 'cause once you get to a point, you've collected enough money. And then, and then once we exceed, you know, the increased fee, we would then be dropping back down to the $50 per additional unit like was previous.
The, the state statute that covers what, what can be charged for certain things, too, especially when you get to a building permit.
So, as, as you see proposed here, we would continue with the new fee of $100 per unit up to 50 units. 'Cause most of the projects are usually around 50 or less. And then anything beyond 50 units would then be calculated at the $50 per unit, which is what the old fee was across the board.
And that's strictly on variance?
That's strictly on, no, it's, it's on special permits. Should be on special permits and variance.
All I have to do is move?
Just, just, just unit, unit count for each one. Sometimes it's unit count by variance, sometimes it's unit count by special permit.
Yep.
Dan, do you think that an alternative method might be to just put a cap on the maximum amount?
Well, it, it could be.
But you think this is more broken here?
Well, 'cause, I mean, sometimes you do need to get the additional fee. It depends what you would wanna put the cap at.
Yeah.
You know, if you're, if you're looking at 100 units times 50, you know, or $100 per, that's 5,000.
Right.
If you're now going to go to 2,000-unit building, we, we may need to spend some money on consulting, so. There has to be some provision that carries through per unit.
So the, the standard at the state level that somebody could appeal to if they feel the, the fees are too high is that the fee charged for a process should be consistent with the effort that needs to be put forth by the community in order to investigate that, or in the case of a building permit, monitor that, uh, building permit, et cetera. So if you walk in, there, there have been uses such as telecommunications towers where, you know, years ago, people were trying to come up with crazy, you know, pay by how many feet the tower's gonna be, how many, you know, feet of line are gonna be on the towers. So you'd have these exorbitant fees that made absolutely no sense, and get shot down very quickly. And, you know, it's the same type of thing. We're not trying to, we're not trying to, to discourage people from applying for large buildings. We're just trying to make it fair for them.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, if suddenly you, you steering down the barrel of $100,000 in fees just to get through the process, you know, that, that, that could make a big difference in whether or not you're gonna build a project, or how well you're gonna landscape the project, or if you're gonna put in tennis courts, or, or, or. You know, so it's.
And again, this can be, you, you can go to $100 per unit, up to 20 units if you choose. I mean, that, that's variable, but this was just my suggestion. You can, you can make any recommendation.
I, I think the 50 is fine, unless somebody else wants the, wants the, to roll it back, but it's $5,000 for, for a 50-unit building. I don't think that's so bad. And then 50 above that.
It's what was in place already.
Yep. Never expected us to approve over 800 units in the same night.
I know. Well, we have, we have some others that, uh, that are pending, coming still.
Yeah.
Soon, ones that are ready to be filed.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the fee schedule as submitted.
Got a second on that?
I have a second.
Then no further discussion on it? I love it. On the motion, Ricky Sahadi.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Jim Cawkins.
Yes.
Eric Kelly.
Yes.
And Chairman Prairie, yes. Yay. There was discussion, citizen input.
We do have a citizen's input.
I do?
Yeah, I have a letter.
Ah, come on.
This letter was, um, mailed on the day of, um, the meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry, that was on camera. CJ Ferry, RN, PHN, uh, follow the zoning board appears. Parking waivers. It has come to my attention that the zoning board of appeals, ZBA, has on their agenda requests for a waiver in parking requirements for several proposed developments. One of those developments has a request for 205 units, which would require 410 parking spaces, and does not include that request for a warehouse or office space on the same property, which would require more parking. The ZBA has regularly worked diligently to destroy neighborhoods by granting these parking variances, it's jujitsu, which I do not believe is any authority of the ZBA, as it is an ordinance and not a zoning requirement. With all the development going on in the city, which is beneficial, so we are told, the destruction, um, in, on, I just lost it. The destruction in neighborhoods by adding more vehicles to the city streets, it lacking an undue burden on neighborhoods in the city. Has the ZBA considered how difficult it would be to park during a parking ban? During a parking ban, the number of parking spaces on the streets are cut in half, which places undue burden on city residents, the addition of five, 100, 250, or 400 more cars on the streets is an unfair and undue burden on the neighborhoods. Uh, these continuous waivers are resulting in the destruction of neighborhoods, which have long been the backbone of citizen activity and representation. I would ask that the ZBA no longer grants waivers for developers when it comes to parking, as the developer should have considered this prior to designing their developments to maximize profits and destroy the fabric of Fall River. Uh, you are contributing to the destruction of the city of Fall River. Respectfully, CJ Ferry. Any else who said, um, to sit in input?
Nope, that is all.
Approval minutes.
Motion to approve.
Waive the reading. And approve.
And approve.
Second.
Second. On the motion, Ricky Sahadi.
Yes.
Dan DePere.
Yes.
Jim Cawkins.
Yes.
Excuse me. Eric Kelly.
Yes.
And Chairman Prairie, yes.
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn.
Yes.
Just one quick thing, through the chair to Dan. This is not within your purview, Dan, but do you have any additional information you can provide this board on the article that appeared in the Herald News this week concerning the denial of the waiver, uh, the denial of the variance on the, um, mansion on Highland Avenue, which supposedly now is being violated?
It is in violation.
Yeah, so I mean, do you have any additional information?
The building inspector is aware of it, and that's going through the legal process.
Okay.
Yes.
So there's nothing further to add than what appeared in the newspaper?
I didn't read it, I don't read the Herald News.
Basically, uh, yeah, what it said is, um, the Herald News had a copy of, um, the, the advertisement on Verbal.
Verbal, yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, I guess Glenn Hathaway is being very, very diligent, at the same time being very measured in, in his response. But I guess that.
Well, as reported in the newspaper.
Yeah, well, I mean, it had direct quotes from him in the newspaper.
It could be, it could be one quote out of an article conversation.
So I'm just, I mean, there, there is nothing this board can do.
At this point, well, we have, we have a number of new zoning petitions that we're working on that we'll be presenting and for a discussion here. In-law apartments, short-term rentals, there are a number of things that if we're going to make some modifications to zoning, we would like to make a few. So start thinking of things that you've, you know, encountered over the years that you see a way to resolve or to make a change.
I'm not so much thinking of that, I'm just thinking of this particular circumstance.
For you, no.
It's out of our hands.
You are not the zoning enforcement officer.
Right, right.
You are the zoning board of appeals. Your work is done.
And to that other issue, I, we voted last month, uh, to, for me to draft a letter to planning department that will get kicked up the line, to mayor's attention, city council's attention, et cetera. We're, we're running with, in some cases, with one arm tied behind our back.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a tower in here, okay?
And if we're gonna go through the effort to make changes in this book, then they should be comprehensively.
Yep, exactly. It, it needs a lot of work. How, how many times was that attorney back in here on that same tower? Ridiculous amount of times. Do you know why? 'Cause we don't have, we don't have a telecommunications.
Or how many, how many times did Chairman Assad, at the meeting, would state, you know, zone, change in zoning is the appropriate way to get what you need, not seeking relief. So, let, let's try and be maybe a little bit more proactive in doing that kind of stuff. Okay.
All right. Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Dan DePere. All in favor? Alex, thank you so much.